So just from last week, this is what, this is what we talked about that is, oops. Going to be on the final. No, that's not working. Okay, so just to review, we're going to do stuff on mixed models, but there's not going to be no derivations or proofs are going to be required. There will be stuff on fine mapping, which is the caveat paper. There will be stuff on mouse genetics, which Jonathan Flint's paper is about. There will be stuff on human ancestry, stuff on population structure, and some questions on probability foundations. So all that stuff, I'm going to show you guys the study guide right now. I'll have a study guide with the the solutions to it out in, you know, about an hour from now, not an hour from now, but like an hour from the end of this. And there will be office hours back in MS 2915 from about from three until five, or like maybe later if you guys like really need it. I may go get some food between now and between the end of this and the beginning of office hours, but other than that, I'll be, I'll be in the office at least until five if you want to come meet and, and watch. Okay, so this is stuff that we, that we already talked about last week is like very likely going to be on the final. So now, let's see, how is this going to fit? It doesn't. So I'm going to switch the screen share over to, okay, I can't. Okay, so I'm going to switch the screen share just to this. Nope, I can't do that either. So it needs to be on desktop two. And it needs to be. Yeah, that's not going to work. Okay, so we're going to share desktop one instead. Actually, there we go, sure that. And nope, I can't move that there. Okay, that looks like it fits pretty well on the screen. Can everybody read from where they are? Okay, great. So the first question, and this is something that, that I didn't mention before, but I think is important. So it's going to be, I'm going to put it on the final, is on the like, what would you do? Like, let's say I gave you a bunch of data and said, do a GWAS on it. Why? So the first question, there's just one question in that, in that vein is on standardizing inputs. So why do we standardize inputs for GWAS? What's the, what's a benefit of doing, of standardizing our, our genetic data? What's that? Not, not quite enough. I can't, I can't quite accept that. It's, it's a reasonable answer, but it's a little bit too, too towards BS. So the important thing is that when you're, when you're drawing your model, like if you're doing like Y equals, you know, mean plus X beta plus error, if you don't have standardized inputs, that mean in that model is different from the population mean. And that makes the model a bit more difficult to interpret compared to if you do have standardized inputs and then the mean of your population is also the mean term of your model. That's, that's a really good enough reason to stand that as inputs by itself. But there are also some things like, like when you're computing P-values, you can be a little bit more efficient because you know what the, what the mean and standard deviation of each, of each SNP is. But primarily it's so the math works out like nicely. It's to make the math be like pretty when you, when you do it. Yeah.
So the answer to your question would be, so math would be pretty?
Kind of, yeah. And that's an acceptable answer, is that the math would be pretty. The, all the proofs that we did in class, we assumed that the inputs were standardized. If they weren't standardized, we wouldn't get the same, we wouldn't, our results would be a lot different. We'd have to account for the fact that the mean of the input data is not zero when we were computing like the mean of the data. That'd be, and that would be a little bit of an issue. Okay. Any questions on that? Cool. Let's look at this next one on mixed models and population structure. You'll see that these questions are mostly, you know, theoretical slash critical thinking questions, not, you're not going to have to do any math here because we didn't really do very much math in the last half of the course. So this one is, is very much a critical thinking question. Give a simple example of a GWAS where failing to account for population structure will result in mistakes. You'll, you'll have bad output, or you'll, you'll either overestimate or underestimate statistics because you didn't account for population structure. Can anybody think of a, a population where that would work for? Or a study that might have that issue? Yeah?
You're trying to, let's say that you're trying to find like which SNPs are associated with diabetes. And then you, in your population, you have like one group that has like a very high like rate of diabetes. And then another where they have like no diabetes, I guess. Then you might, and like let's say that there are two like different, like whatever the politically correct term is.
Sure.
Then you're going to get like a false association between all the SNPs that are unique to that like group as opposed to like to diabetes.
Sure, sure, yep. Yeah, so, so yeah, that's a good, that's a good example of it. If you have like, for example, two different ethnic groups where, where one group has a higher rate of, higher rate of diabetes than the other, every SNP that's related to being a member of that ethnic group is going to be perceived as a risk factor for diabetes, even though it's, it's not, right? There may in fact be genetic causes, but there, but but a lot of the SNPs that are going to get pulled down are ones that are, that are associated to that, that group, that population. Yeah, but I think ethnic group is a perfectly politically correct term to use here. I mean, and, and you know, if you look like there are, there are very clearly differences in disease rates for, for people of different ethnicities, right? Skin cancer is much more common in people of European descent compared to people of African descent. And, you know, and the difference is because of, and the primary difference is because of differences in skin tone. People with lighter skin or fairer skin have a much higher risk factor than people with darker skin. It's, we, we talked about this in a discussion earlier, but there was like a tension between being able to absorb, make vitamin D from the sun and have, and absorb sunlight and have fair skin and not die early of skin cancer and have darker skin. So you know, these two evolutionary factors drove basically the, the evolution of lighter, of fairer skin, you know, hundreds of, 100,000 years ago. So very, very interesting. But, but yeah, where, if you have a, for example, two cities in the country, so let's say you're comparing Boston and, you know, and El Paso. If the, you know, people in Boston, there's like a lot of family structure in there that might also throw off the results. So if you have a lot of families in your data, that's another thing where not accounting for population structure can give you, can give you bad results. So for example, if you have like a Mendelian disease, so a disease like Huntington's disease, for example, and you just end up sampling a population that has a lot of families with Huntington's disease, you're going to, you might assume that Huntington's disease is associated with like a, with all the people who are kind of related to these families or who are most genetically similar to these families rather than, and that would be, that'd be a mistake. So really, any example of population structure will give you bad results for your GWAS. Anything where there's, there's sort of like a confounding population factor will give you something that, that will confound your GWAS. Yeah.
Is it like predisposed as that, I can't say the conditions. Oh, pre, you know, like a predisposed position, something could cause a false positive?
I would avoid that. I don't, because I don't know what you mean.
Like where there's like, I'll let, like, I think, there's extending situations, but you're just going to stop.
Okay, think about it. Email it to me and I will, I will give you an idea. That's okay.
So the mixed model thing?
Yeah.
The difference between that and like, whatever you use otherwise is that you are able to model the unmodeled factors, right? But to clarify, are the only unmodeled factors that you're counting for like relationships between people?
So in, so that was a good question. Basically, what, what the question was for the seven people who are watching this online, thank, thanks you guys. The question was, what factors do mixed models account for? Are, and are they just population factors? Is that, or population structure factors? Is that correct?
Yeah, only the contrib matrix stuff?
Right, so, yeah, so for our purposes, we're, you can pretty much, and for the purposes of this exam, you can consider that the only factors that the mixed model will include are population structure factors. However, you can also do mixed models for, you know, a variety of other factors. So for example, if you have like exposure to a toxin or, you know, the latitude or socioeconomic status or, you know, you know, income or anything like that, you can do mixed models and try to attribute to, to those factors, some of the variance in your data. But for the purposes of, of what we're doing here, you can assume that all of those factors relate to, relate to, relate to population structure unless like it's very, unless it's very clear, like, there was a question like, what else could you model using a linear mixed model? Or, you know, you have, there are lots and lots of options for what you can model using a linear mixed model, but for most of the, the questions on the exam, unless it's made very clear that it's otherwise, you can assume that they're population structure. Yeah.
Like, or just correlations between?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, basically the same. Okay, fine mapping. So before we talk about this, this question, let's just talk about what fine mapping is. Fine mapping is the process of finding likely causal variants within a set of associated variants. That's basically what fine mapping is, is you have a large list of, of SNPs that are associated, or you have a region of the genome that is associated, and your goal is to identify the, a smaller set of causal SNPs. So that is, that is what fine mapping actually is. And is it easier to perform this mapping in a, in a region of high LD or low LD? Let's just talk about what LD is for a second. LD is the difference in correlation between two SNPs from independence. So if there is, if you have two SNPs and they're independent of each other, that's low LD. If you find that there's a strong correlation between them, or a strong anti-correlation between them, they're, if you find a strong correlation or a strong anti-correlation between them, those SNPs are not an LD. Yep, 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 yep. So is it easier to perform fine mapping in a region with high LD or low LD? I think somebody said it, but very quietly. Yeah, low. It's, it's easier to perform fine mapping when there is low LD. And the reason for that is, the reason that it's easy to perform fine mapping when there is, when there's not much LD is because when the SNPs are independent, if you have a really strong P-value, it's not likely to be correlated to a SNP around it. So you're going to have a very, a very sharp peak on the Manhattan plot of one, of, you know, the one SNP. Though like the one SNP that is associated, and then it's easy to do fine mapping. Whereas if you have high LD and lots of SNPs are correlated to each other, then each SNP is going to tag the SNPs that are close to it really well. And because they're good tags for each other, it's hard to tell, it's hard to tell whether this one SNP, this is, this is the associated SNP, or this, this SNP which is, has very similar values is the true, is the true causal SNP. So independence is, is helpful for finding true associations. And we'll see, we'll see more of that in a bit. Any more questions on fine mapping? This is the caveat paper. It's up in CCL. Let's see.
So fine mapping is the process of finding likely causal variants within something, sorry.
Within a, a set of, of associated variants. So you're trying to identify a small set of potential causal variants from a larger set of associated variants. Okay. There will be definite stuff on statistical foundations. Because they're important. So let's define the term P-value. I'm going to define it right now for you guys, just because I think it's important for you all to remember. Or this is, this is a good, this is a good definition and it is usable by you guys on the exam. A P-value is the likelihood of observing a statistic at least as extreme as the experimental statistic under the null hypothesis. So it's the likelihood that you observe a statistic at least as extreme as the experimental statistic under the null hypothesis. So you're you're looking at the probability under the null of finding, of, yeah, finding something kind of farther out into the tail of the null distribution than your, than whatever value you got back. That's what a P-value is. Okay, any, any questions on that? Yeah?
Could we replace the word experimentation with, are we using?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, they're not, these are not like, it is important to be accurate, like there, there are words that kind of need to be there. Like, under the null hypothesis is probably an important statement there. Some of them can be, some of these words can be, some of them can be replaced, some of them can't, and you just have to be careful with like where synonyms really do mean the same thing and where they, where they might not. Okay, let's also define the term statistical power, and I'll give you guys this one as well because it's also very important. Statistical power is the likelihood of observing a statistically significant association under the alternate hypothesis, given that the, that a true association exists. So just to, to repeat that, statistical power is the likelihood of observing a statistically significant association under the alternate hypothesis, given that a true association exists. Yeah, so you can see there in many ways mirror images of each other. There's a lot, there's a lot that mirrors between, between power and, power and P-value. They're, they're obviously not the same, but there's, there's some symmetry. Yeah.
Is power always defined by a given effect size, like the minimum effect size that you?
Yes, so there, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of other things that are, that I'm taking as assumptions there. So it's like add a given effect size and a given allele frequency and a given like blah, blah, blah. Those I'm not super worried about you getting saying. The point is that like, power is the chance that you detect, in, in basic terms, power is the chance that you detect a, that you detect a statistically significant association, given that a true one exists. That's, that's it. Okay, you should also know the terms type one error rate and type two error rate. If they weren't drilled into your head in your intro stats class, we're going to do that now. A type one error, which is also referred to as a false positive, is when you reject the null hypothesis when you should not. Or you should reject the null hypothesis when the null is actually true. Which means that you are calling something statistically significant when the association does not truly exist. So that's a type one error or a false positive. A type two error or a false negative is a failure to reject the null hypothesis when the alternate hypothesis actually holds. When, when the null hypothesis is not true and the alternate hypothesis actually is true. And we fail to reject the null. In GWAS terms, a false positive is calling a SNP, a false positive or a type one error is calling a SNP significant when it is not. And a type two error is not calling a, not calling an association significant when in fact a true association does exist. That's type one and type two error. So what is the relationship between type one error and, and power? Type one error rate and power? So there's a simpler question, which is, what's the relationship between type two error rate and power? And let's try to answer that one first before we dig into this question, which is a bit more challenging. So what's the relationship between type two error rate and power? Yeah, so the, the rate of, of false negatives is one minus the, the true positive rate, which is the power. So type two error rate is your, is the amount of, the fraction of false negatives that you have, which is going to be one minus your, your power to detect a true, true positives. For type one error rate, the relationship is pretty limited. But the, the relationship goes through this. An increase in the P-value threshold for your study decreases both type one error rate and power. So if you have a, if you have a stronger P-value threshold, you will have a lower type one error rate. So fewer of the associations that you deem to be significant will, will not be true associations. But also it'll be difficult, it'll be more difficult to identify, you will have some of the sort of marginal statistically significant relationships, which will then go to be, being not statistically significant when you make the P-value threshold stronger. And those will go away. So it decreases your power. Yeah?
Would be the proper, so would it be good for us to give an example of a situation like this to be like, because if we say decrease alpha, to say like as in 0.5 or 0.4? Because that's what you mean by increase.
Yes, increase the threat, increase the strength of the threshold. Yeah.
Should, would it be good to give like an example so you make clear what we're thinking?
You can do that, yeah. Yeah, an example, I mean, generally these questions can be answered in like one or two really good sentences. And paragraphs are, are not necessary and like, if you, if you say things that are, if you say only correct things that are, if you say things that are only right in your paragraph, I probably can't grade you down. But if you write a paragraph that has both the right answer and wrong answers in it, you will definitely lose points on the exam. So, so the best thing for both you and me is for you guys to be succinct and accurate. So try to do, try to do that here. Okay. Any, any more questions on this, on this one?
So the relationship between power and type one is that we both decrease, like when you decrease P-value?
When you, when you make the P-value threshold stronger, both power and type one error rate decrease. Yeah. Okay, list four factors that influence power in a GWAS. So any, let's throw that out. Anybody got some factors? P-value threshold, right? P-value threshold definitely works. Yeah, so alpha, great. The alpha or the P-value threshold is going to be one of them. Okay, what else? Yeah. The, the effect size of the, of the SNP in question, right? A SNP with a bigger effect size is going to be easier to detect than a SNP with a weak effect size. Great. So that's two. Good. The allele frequency, right? So the frequency of the allele that you're testing, right? If you have a, if you have an allele that's like half and half, half the people have it, half the people don't, it's very easy to detect an association that's not due to chance. If you have an allele that's only there in 1% of the population, it's very difficult to detect a true association. Great, table that one for a second and cover the one that's a little bit more obvious, which is sample size, right? The larger your sample size, the easier it is to, the easier, the more power that you're going to have, right? We had a lot of stuff on that in the first half of the class, but bigger sample size, the more statistical power you have. And then also within your sample size, so, so just getting to, getting to that point, the ratio of cases and controls. So if you have a study that's evenly split between cases and controls, that's going to be, that will maximize power versus having a very unbalanced study where you have, let's say, a lot more controls than cases. Because that's always what happens. Never have like a ton of, a ton of cases and like no controls. It doesn't, I mean, if that were the case, it would be, it would, the case thing would be the normal thing and people would be considering the controls in cases. Anyway, yeah.
Is this specifically GWAS? Do these go beyond just GWAS or general, what is this part?
Um, I mean, the, what I'm asking for are, is specifically related to, to GWAS. You can phrase them a little bit more generally. So you can talk about like the dynamic range of the input variables and the dynamic range of the output variables. The dynamic range of the input variables in this case is the allele frequency. The dynamic range of the output variable would be the, the ratio of cases and controls or the or the range of phenotypes that you get that you're trying to do the correlation to. So you can phrase it more generally, but for the purpose of, in the real world, are there other things that influence power? It depends. There probably are other tests that have other factors in them that you can use. And even like the test that you use itself plays a role in the power. So if you use a really crappy test, you may end up with really bad power than if you use like a test that makes sense. So that might be another thing that you could say, if something influences power, is like what kind of test you're using? Whether you're using like a t-test or whether you're using like a, you know, a Man Whitney U or correlation or whatever, like that also influences the power that you observe. But the stuff that's most GWAS-related, you know, I'm phrasing in GWAS terms. But you could think about if you took genetics out of the equation, how it might be. Yeah.
So is it fair to say power is basically is how far away the alternate distribution is from the null?
Yes.
So like, I'm trying to think about like not intuitively, just like in the math.
Sure.
So like basically the things that affect the non-centrality parameter and then there's the sample size?
Yep.
So like, in terms of the non-centrality parameter, like just the GWAS?
Yeah.
What does the effect size correspond to? And then what do the allele frequencies correspond to and why do those increase the non-centrality?
So for the non-centrality parameter, and this is a good enough question that I'm going to open up a whiteboard and put this on here. Oh boy. This is bad. Okay, so here is our sort of null distribution. And I can't see, so whatever. I'm gonna use the same color. Here's our alternate distribution. Okay, and this is our alpha, for example. That's our p-value threshold. This area right here is your power to detect an association. Okay, so the position of this versus, let's say, 0. So this distance right here is determined by the effect size. I'm sorry, this is very ugly. But that's what I'm able to do. So the distance between the null and the alternate is determined by the effect size. And it is also determined by the allele frequency. Actually, no, sorry. That's actually the thing that's controlled by that, is just the effect size. The effect size is controlling how far, how far those two things are apart from each other. And then what's really important is the variance. So in, there are a couple of factors that are controlling the variance here. So, and really the ones that control it are basically all the remaining ones. So your sample size, right? Larger sample size means that the distributions are going to shrink horizontally. They're gonna become more pointed. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought the way that we normalize things, the variance.
It is, the, let's see, let's see. Okay. So I guess it's a trade-off, basically. So sample size, you can kind of trade the two off. So I guess we always say that if we do the thing where we do the lambda A root N and 1, then everything is going into effect size. But basically what you're doing is you're multiplying by, like you're multiplying out all the factors that kind of in the real world affect the variance. And you're saying, and you're instead converting them to factors that affect the separation between the two of them. Does that make sense? Because if you, if, for example, I take a normal distribution and I multiply it by, you know, I divide it by some value, variance gets divided by the square of that value. I've turned that effect on the mean or on the variance into an effect on the mean of the distribution. But now I've made the variance go back to 1.
So any of these factors can pretty much affect the mean of the variance? Because you could have normalized the mean to be something and just that would affect the variance.
So the only one that you can't is the effect size. The effect size is the only one that only affects the mean because it's an additive effect. So it's not, but the other effects are all multiplicative. So like the allele frequency has a multiplicative effect, it has that like p times 1 minus p, you know, in the denominator. So that multiplicative effect is something that gets kind of divided out. To me, that's really an effect on the variance because the more, like, this is how I would classify it in my head. But now that I think about it, it could be in our lambda A root N space, it's actually an effect on the mean, but really in like real world space, it's an effect on the variance. Anyway, these are good theoretical questions. But not totally, not totally important and probably won't be tested. That's fine. But yeah, it's a good thing to think about. Great. Okay, so we covered the factors that influence power in GWAS. Human genetics. We'll definitely be talking about that. Define the terms mitochondrial Eve and Y-chromosomal Adam. So mitochondrial Eve is a woman who is the most recent common ancestor of all humans, be they male or female. And you can tell because kind of, it's, you know, when you look at all the humans that are out there and you look at their mitochondrial DNA, they join at some point about like 180,000 years ago. I believe. Let's see. Great. And then Y-chromosomal Adam is the most recent common ancestor of all male humans. There are women alive today who may not be descended from Y-chromosomal Adam. But all men alive today are descendants. So I guess by extension, all women must be descended from him. All women who are alive today. But at the time, not all women were descended from Y-chromosomal Adam. This person, and like as the professor said in the lecture, these people did not know that they were like the human from which all humans would trace their lineage to. If you go, if you were to go, you know, another 500,000 years into human history, probably somebody, you know, somebody alive today is probably the ancestor of all humans who will be born 500,000 years from now, assuming we make it that far. It's just kind of, this was a population bottleneck and everybody just kind of by random chance ended up being descended from this person. Yeah.
So Y-chromosomal Adam, everyone is related?
Everyone is related, yeah.
Because if every male has a child today, their children?
Yeah. And even, you know, 100 years ago, 10,000 years ago, those people were all descended from Y-chromosomal Adam as well. But you can only tell by looking at the Y-chromosome. Or the way that you tell how far, how long ago that guy lived is by looking at the Y-chromosomes of the men who are alive today.
So isn't it necessary to speak about, because they both have the same answer, the oldest woman and the oldest man are traceable? But would you want to see more of the idea of trace through mitochondrial DNA passed from the mother, trace by the Y-chromosome passed by father?
Yep, and you might also make the point, or it's another important point to know that mitochondrial Eve preceded Y-chromosomal Adam by some number of thousands of years ago. Or some like, and not just like 10,000 years, like 40,000, 50,000 years difference between mitochondrial Eve and Y-chromosomal Adam. But and that might have to do with the way that human beings lived, you know, a long time. You know, many, many, you know, 150,000 years ago, there was a lot more, like, there might have been wars in old human populations, you know, still probably involved a lot of men and a lot of killing. So the population of men was relatively small, where the population of women was larger. And as a result, you have to go back farther to find the woman from whom all people are descended than the man. But yeah.
Because in the Y chromosome, you can't check all common males, but in Y chromosome, you can check all of them.
No. Yeah. At the end of the day, it doesn't make too much of a difference. Okay, this question on the out of Africa hypothesis. So the out of Africa hypothesis posits that anatomically modern human beings left Africa 140,000 years ago. If this hypothesis were true, would you expect more or less genetic diversity in African populations or non-African populations? And why? So if human beings, if a human beings, a small group of human beings left Africa 140,000 years ago and that group expanded to populate basically the rest of the world, would you expect that population, the population that left Africa or the population that stayed in Africa to have higher genetic diversity? Yep. The one that stayed in Africa, yeah. So there was a big bottleneck effect, right? Leaving Africa was an enormous bottleneck effect. It was a big decrease in the population, in the size of the population. And also when population size goes down, genetic drift becomes very important. So there was probably a lot of genetic drift that happened in that population that left Africa. But it is, if that hypothesis were true, you would find that African populations are more genetically diverse than non-African populations. And if you look in the HapMap data or, you know, any data that includes African populations and you look and you compare them to populations from anywhere else in the world, it's very clear that there's a greater genetic diversity in African populations compared to non-African populations. Very clear. So like the HapMap data, for example, is one project where they've collected African genomes and non-African genomes. And the African genomes have very clearly higher diversity. Okay, this is some of the last stuff. We should be able to finish right on time. If you take two mice and you brother-sister mate them and then you brother-sister mate their children and you do that for 30 generations of inbreeding, how many haplotypes will you have in that population? After 30 generations of inbreeding, how many haplotypes in that population will exist? So the answer is 1. There's only gonna be 1 haplotype. Because just by random chance, the whole arm of a chromosome is going to be passed down from, you know, father to child or mother to child. And after 30 generations of that, you kind of have a 1 in 2 chance of passing down those arms each generation. After 30 generations, all that crossing over isn't gonna matter anymore. You're just gonna have these chromosomes that are identical, that are completely identical. So you only have 1 haplotype. The, you have 1 haplotype, all the males are identical, twins of each other genetically. All the females are identical, twins of each other genetically. And every person's like, every female's, if you, when they do like segregation of their alleles, they're identical. The 2 cells that they have are completely identical genetically. So you only have 1 haplotype. Okay, and then what are some of the benefits of working with a collaborative cross or HMDP population compared to classically inbred mouse strains? So working with a cross of mice or HMDP, any mouse that's more diverse than nothing, which is how diverse a classically inbred strain is, gives you much better resolution of associations. So if you do association testing in a mice or a collaborative cross, you'll get a lot of, the LD will be low, there will be low LD. And as a result, you'll be able to pick out associations very strongly. Or true associations will show up much more strongly and with a much stronger peak than there would be in the inbred mice, where you'll have kind of broader and lower peaks because they have lots of LD, they have a big, big LD structure. But the peaks won't be as sharp. That's the primary benefit of using HMDP or collaborative cross. The other thing that's also important about the HMDP or collaborative cross mice is that they are easier to take care of, they're more robust, they have more children compared to inbred mice strains. They're, yeah, they're more active and they're easier to keep alive, which is important if you're doing mouse studies. Okay, and then for grads only, there will be some questions on mathematical foundations. So this is going to be stuff on, like, this is going to test whether you understand the derivations, for example, for the mixed model. But you're not going to be asked to re-derive it. So you don't need to memorize the derivation, but you need to understand what kind of each of the moving parts is. It's gonna be a grad, these are questions that are gonna be for grads only. But that's about what to expect. And I kind of expect that you grads who are here will do the rest of the book. So like, yeah, that's it. Any questions? No math. No math questions on this because we didn't really do very much math in this part of the course, so. No math. Yes. It will, right now the test, I think the test is a little bit short, so it may get a bit longer. But I mean, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, it's not gonna be, I'm not gonna put like 20 of these on there. Yeah, I mean, my expectation is right now, the test as it is, is probably, you know, 70% of the length of the midterm in terms of the amount of time that it'll take. So I may keep extending it out until like the midterm and the final have about equal length. But that's, it's not gonna be, I'm not gonna put like, make the final really, really crazy difficult or like really long. Yeah, yeah. And again, like most answers to questions, like good answers, like one or two good sentences is what you should target for your answers. If you write a lot of stuff that's correct, I'm not gonna take off points. But if you write stuff that is incorrect in addition to the stuff that is correct, I will. So, you know, try to give the most targeted, correct answer that is also complete. And I'll have solutions for this up in about an hour after I get back to the lab. Okay, any more questions? Yeah.
There's been a lot of discussion goes on, is there a way to check that we're clear or anything? Or is it just too late?
I mean, you can check, I think you have the ability to check your own logs. But for like the forum discussion stuff, like that's essentially how it's great. Is that I get a dump of the logs and I parse them. So I get like basically the times and dates when you did stuff and the words that you posted. So that's how I'm going to check it. So if you want So if you want to like, look at your own, I would say like, see if you can find your own logs on stuff and like look for like my posts in the forum. And if there are sufficient number of posts, you're, you're fine. Like, nobody, it's very rare where somebody in this class like really loses their grade because they like, they missed two forum posts or something like that. That's not gonna happen. Yeah.
I just want to clarify, you only have one?
Program assignment, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay, great. That is it.